Once again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee of the Hall meeting for March 24, 2020. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Cameron?
Yes, here.
Carbonaro?
Still here.
Danny?
Here.
Gobrenia?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here.
First item we have on our agenda this evening under the Committee of the Hall meeting is Building and Zoning. Chairman Hopkins?
Thank you, President Wallace. We have one item on our agenda tonight under Building and Zoning, and that is 102 Oakwood Lane. And the subject's property is Zone SR3 Suburban Residential. The property is located in the County Creek, Unit Number One subdivision, and it was the former site of the Country Creek Clubhouse. The petitioner is requesting an eight-foot variance from the 35-foot required corner side yard to allow construction of a new two-story, single-family home with a covered porch. This represents a 23% reduction of the required corner side yard setback. The zoning board of appeals reviewed this request at their March 5 meeting, and they recommended approval of it. With that, is there any questions regarding this?
No.
Didn't see any.
Roberta, do you have any comments?
No, I think you handled it well. Thank you.
All right. If there's no other comments, we'll forward this on to the Village Board. I appreciate the zoning board of appeals reviewing this for us and giving us their feedback and the other residents that showed up and commented about it. Other than that, we'll forward it on to the Village Board for a vote.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins.
That's all we have under...
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Hopkins.
You're welcome.
Next item we have in the committee meeting this evening is on our Community and Economic Development Committee Chairman Gobrenia.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one item this evening. On February 25, 2020, staff met with representatives from the Illinois Tollway and their consultants from Parsons Transportation Group. They are seeking input in regard to the Illinois 390 ramp from Lake Street to County Farm Road to reduce traffic off of Greenbrook Boulevard through Hanover Park. And, Roberta, would it be you that can discuss that with us?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Trustee Gobrenia. Can you hear... everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so, yes, we met with the consultants last month concerning the extension, and I've got on my screen here the current Illinois 390 ramp that ends at Lake Street and the proposed area where they would extend the ramps to County Farm Road here. Traveling down County Farm Road, we've got Stearns and Greenbrook Boulevard here, traveling eastbound to the on-ramp. So, traffic traveling eastbound onto Stearns during the AM peak hours to access the eastbound Illinois 390 ramp occurs at the same time as parents and students are commuting to Horizon Elementary School on Greenbrook Boulevard in Hanover Park. So, that elementary school is located here on your map. With this potential ramp extension, traffic would increase along County Farm Road both in the AM and the PM peak hours. Within the project study area, most of the intersections would not see any changes in the level of service, or the level of service would actually be slightly improved compared to a no-build scenario. The exception is the existing Stearns Road and County Farm intersection, which would actually experience lower levels of service due to the increase in traffic. So, the intersections they're referring to that may improve are located along Greenbrook Boulevard here, here, here. I've got another slide if I can. So, here is... the blue is the proposed pavement of the extension. So, the on-ramp would eastbound, one lane, and then one lane traveling westbound with a new signal here at County Farm Road. And the yellow is actually the proposed right-of-way taking on the east side of County Farm. So, two alternatives were presented to the staff. We have here on your screen Alternative 3C. This includes dual left turns in each direction, right-of-way acquisitions, and barrier medians resulting in access restrictions on both Stearns and County Farm Road, and primarily affecting the property at the northwest corner here in Bartlett, which is the BP gas station, and then the surrounding vacant commercial property to the north and then to the west. Moving on to Alternative 3D, this includes dual left turns only on Stearns Road and Greenbrook Boulevard, less right-of-way acquisitions, and less access restrictions than the previous alternative. And this is a result of no barrier medians being installed on County Farm. So, I'll go back. You can see, again, the blue is the pavement widening at each intersection roadway here, and then the yellow is the right-of-way take. And then when I turn to 3D, it's much less. You can see how there's much less yellow along County Farm and primarily along these roadway lines. So, the staff expressed and had a number of concerns and questions for the tollway, and some of those included the potential noise that would increase for residents who back up to County Farm Road here in Bartlett. We also talked about costs. How would this be paid for? And the tollway said that the project would be funded from the tollway cost-sharing policy. It's a program with a 50-50 split between the tollway and local jurisdictions. Hanover Park would be pursuing federal funding for the project. We also expressed concerns about right-of-way takes that would impact the existing BP gas station, again here, and the commercial development that the staff has actually received a concept plan for retail development here at this location. Traffic obviously would be increased on County Farm, but we also felt that there was a potential for increased traffic traveling westbound on Stearns, and this is only a two-way road system. Cut-through traffic was also a concern. Residents currently say that traffic cuts through Dunhaman here off of County Farm and travels to Newport Boulevard here. And that is... would actually increase with the potential traffic along County Farm Road. And then finally, safety. So, if I go back, safety with this curvature, this S-curve here along County Farm Road currently does experience traffic accidents. And if traffic increases from this ramp extension, we also feel that accidents could also increase along this portion of the roadway. So, staff submitted a formal response to the tollway. We stated that the village prefers no extension of Illinois 390, which would not require any modifications to the intersection of Stearns and County Farm Road. And if Illinois 390 is extended westerly County Farm, the village prefers Alternative 3D over Alternative 3C. With that, I want to let you know that Lynn Means is participating in this meeting tonight. So, if you have any technical questions, she can easily answer those, and I can try to answer the easier questions. But that ends my presentation.
Roberta, this is Trustee Danny. I have a question for you. What's... why do they want to reconfigure 390?
They felt that this...
What's the rationale behind it?
Yeah. They felt that there was a lot of traffic during the AM peak hours was conflicting with the parents and students at Horizon Elementary School along Greenbrook Boulevard. So, this new ramp would basically bring everybody north of that area, and all of the traffic would then end up along County Farm Road up here.
Okay.
And also, this is Paula Schimacher. I would just also add that Hanover Park has been pushing for this change. They're the impetus behind the project.
Because of the... because of the situation by the school?
And that, and it also fits into their downtown revitalization plans.
I'm with you. Understand.
There's also... there's also an issue on Greenbrook. Anytime between 2:30 and 4 o'clock where the buses are coming eastbound on Route 20, they're turning down Greenbrook, and they stop. And there's two stops along the Greenbrook at Arlington, and there's a little cul-de-sac that's there. And they stop there for three or four minutes, and the traffic backs up onto Lake Street, and it just gets to be ridiculous. So, it's a safety issue.
When is this going to happen?
Lynn, are you there?
Yes, yes, I'm here.
Do we have a timeframe on when this might happen? I don't think they gave us one.
No, I believe they are currently, right now, still in the Phase 1 component of the project, which is still performing all of the necessary studies, the traffic studies, the noise analysis and such. So, I believe that process they identified as an 18-month process. And then there's still, at this point, no funding secured. So, there's still the design component, and then obviously the construction component of it. And I don't believe at this time there was a timeframe for those happening, nor funding available for those yet.
This is Paula Schimacher. I believe they said in our meeting that they will be continuing with public input and the kinds of meetings that they are doing with us through the summer.
So, let's go back to the drawing 3C. Can we look at that one more time? All right, that is the... this is what the... what we're proposing. This if they... well, when they change it, it's obviously it's going to change. But this is what we would be satisfied with, Alternate 3C. Is that correct?
No, Roberta here. Actually, we were proposing if... no, no extension, but if they were to extend, we would be proposing 3D.
Oh, 3D, okay.
Yes, it's less of a right-of-way take here, as you can see.
What is it actually, Roberta? This is Vince. When we add that yellow, are we adding a turn lane or an additional widening of the merging lane? Because that's already two lanes going down to one in another 100 feet.
Right.
Right, right. Lynn, could you answer that?
Yes. So, I... is they're looking at extending that... if you could see the... there is already a right turn lane there, and I believe it's just extending the length of that right turn lane. There's no addition... under Alternative C provides a second left turn lane under them. Under 3D, it doesn't. It's basically just looking at extending that southbound right turn lane on County Farm Road, I believe. But no, no additional turn lanes would be provided on County Farm Road.
Okay. My question is, is now turn westbound on Stearns, that yellow, that yellow area there, is that an additional lane? Because right there between County Farm and Newport, which is the next intersection there, that is two lanes that go down to one lane right after Newport. So, what is that yellow additional right-of-way? Yes?
Yes. So, that right-of-way is needed to be able to provide a second eastbound left turn lane on Stearns. So, basically, it would have a shift of that alignment. And then, as well as on Greenbrook on the westbound approach, that would have a second left turn lane as well. So, that's just the additional right-of-way, and the pavement is actually in the blue. But that's the right-of-way that's needed in order to provide a second left turn lane on both Stearns Road and as well as on Greenbrook Boulevard.
Okay. This is just my input, because I drive this way to work every day. If you were to take that yellow line and continue it all the way to Newport, so that there's no drag racing going on to cut off people because it merges quickly, and there's also traffic coming out of the Amoco, we can make that like a right turn only. This way, people would stay to the right and not cut over, you know, after they get past Newport, because there are a lot of accidents at that intersection.
Yeah, we haven't seen the actual... I don't believe that they have shared with us any concept plans to show the actual layouts yet. I don't believe that they're at that phase yet.
Okay.
But I would agree with your statement.
Okay, thank you.
But that's something to be looked at. What's... I think that if this is to be moved forward, that's obviously, I think, a concern that we would want to look at through the design process.
Okay. Thank you. And that's all I have.
So, what's... this is Trustee Danny again. So, are they going to have additional meetings? Are we going to see... is staff going to see any other alternative ideas on this? Are we locked into this?
Roberta here. They are proposing additional public meetings in the late summer and fall.
Okay.
So, we will attend. We will attend those.
Let me just suggest to the board why I think this is a really bad idea.
Yeah.
Go back to the original photo, Roberta, the first one. This is just the beginning of this. You don't take a perfectly good tollway that's dumping out onto a four-lane expressway, basically almost an expressway, and then move it through a residential neighborhood and have it dead-end into a two-lane road without future plans to keep moving west. This is not a good idea for Bartlett.
Got it.
Because this thing will just keep going west. And I had two kids that went to Horizon. I drove them there every morning from third grade to sixth grade, and I had no issues.
Are they going to still continue with the exits that they currently have at Lake Street?
Those will actually change somewhat. The... this ramp here... let me see if I can get the pointer here. So, this ramp will, as they told us, would disappear, and then the light would be moved to... I think I might have... let me see if I have another diagram. So, this portion would be removed, and traffic would then have to make a left to get onto Illinois 390, exit this way.
That's crazy.
Okay. So, this is a new light. This would be a new light.
Yeah, they would put it under signal control, and then they would have to also establish two left turn lanes to basically come in to get onto the ramp. So, there would be improvements necessary where, right now, it's free flow, and then under this modification, it would become under signal control.
Roberta, do you have the additional map that shows where this potentially could wind up?
I do not.
I know we've seen it. We've seen it in meetings, and we need to have the board take a look at that, because we're just seeing a very small portion of this picture.
Yeah.
Like I said, this concept of moving it over to a two-lane road, when it's already hitting a four-lane road both directions, makes absolutely no sense to me. And the only reason why we would... this would possibly make any sense is for future plans to have this thing go right through parts of Bartlett. I agree with Mayor Wallace.
I'd like to see that.
Roberta, if you can get that out, because there's additional information that we had in one of those meetings showing what the actual full plan is on this proposal. I just... they would have to come up with some other alternative for me to be happy with this. This isn't... doesn't make any sense to dump it out onto County Farm.
Not at all. Not at all.
I agree.
I can see some efforts. I can see some efforts in redirecting traffic somehow, so people do have to take... more people take a left turn on County Farm to get onto Lake Street to then get onto the El Jenoare Expressway. But this doesn't make any sense. And the future of it absolutely is painful for Bartlett.
What options do we have, Roberta?
We don't... I mean, right now, we're just going to go to public meetings and just, like the letter we said, we don't want anything done.
Right, that's why Paula...
Unless somebody on the board has a different opinion.
I don't... I served 30 years on blank. You're not going to take a highway and dump it into County Farm at dead end?
Yeah.
Doesn't make sense.
No. No, I agree.
Does anyone on our board have any support for this? If you do, now's the time to speak up. Otherwise, we're going to have the staff do what we can to bring up real big issues with this proposal.
Mayor Wallace said, "I agree with you." Let's move forward on this.
Trustee Carbonaro, I agree with you also.
I agree as well, Mr. President. Is there anything else?
No, I think...
...lead our items for this evening.
All right. Did you get enough info, Roberta?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Gobrenia. Next item we have on our agenda this evening is under Finance and Golf Committee Chairman Danny.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two items on our agenda this evening. The first one is sewer... water and sewer rate review. And the second one is... did I lose you guys?
No.
My screen...
I know, because we're switching over.
Oh, okay.
We're switching over the control of it.
2020-2021 Proposed Budget Review for Golf and Public Works. First item is water sewer rate review. Who worked on this for staff?
Todd.
Todd?
Yeah, I did. This is Todd, the finance director.
Todd, how are you this morning?
I'm amended. Hi, thank you. Yeah, we briefly reviewed the sewer, water and sewer funds during our second meeting in February when we did the overall budget review. And at that time, we were proposing not to do an increase to the water rates, and we were going to go through with the third year of increases to the sewer rates. And since then, a lot has changed. And we... so, we put this budget out. We put the sewer rate review out. And what we're proposing right now to do is, based on the sewer fund projected balance, we are proposing to put this off for six months and not implement an increase at this time to leave the water rate as it is and the sewer rate as it is. We've been increasing the rates. We have additional money from the DuPage County side that we were proposing to use for infrastructure improvements to add to the sewer improvement program. And if we do that, we will still... so, if we waited six months before we did increase, we would still have an ending balance at the end of the year of about 1.9 million, which would still be over our minimum balance in the sewer fund. So, at this time, we're proposing to come back six months later to look at the sewer rates, if that makes sense to you guys.
I think it makes a lot of sense. This is Trustee Cameron, and I think we should do that. Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Just a heads up. Paula and I had a conversation after I'd spoke with all the board members individually, just about the email that you guys got in reference to some hiatuses here. So, just bear with staff, because some of the things that we're going through have changed up in the last 24 hours as far as budgeting is concerned. Is that accurate, Paula?
In a nutshell, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Does anybody have any question? Oh, it's not my committee, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Chairman Danny.
Yeah, I think that we should definitely do this, considering the circumstances that we're in right now. To hold this off for six months, I think would be an incredible... it'd be absolutely fantastic for our residents. And Todd, thanks a lot for putting this together. It's real great.
I guess I will ask the question that, since we received a memo kind of late notice of which this was talked about with holding off on the expenditures or the increase in the water rates, are we going to talk about the other areas that were also talked about not receiving?
Yeah, I thought I would do that when we hit the budget review.
Okay, all right.
There's nothing else? Any other questions?
There is one. This is Trustee Hopkins. Are we still going ahead with all capital improvements for the water in the sewer?
The capital improvements, yes, but any capital equipment purchase will be held off for six months.
Okay.
Two different budgets.
We're all fine with it, then we'll move on. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah. Can we move on to the budget?
Yes.
All right.
Sure. I'll turn it over to Paula then to start the budget. Yeah. So, late this afternoon, I did send you a memo with a plan moving forward. It's a six-month freeze that we've contemplated. And, you know, the pandemic has brought forth changes on an hourly, weekly, daily basis. It's very, very fluid. And we don't know what the future holds for us, or even have any kind of reliable way to estimate when our reaction to the virus will come to an end or be lifted on some of those restrictions. But what we do know is we know the impact that the past recession had on our budget. And Todd went back, and he looked at some historical information, and we looked at the practices that we put in place at that time. And I'm recommending to the board that for the next six months, we halt all expenditures related to hiring, with the exception of the police recruitment process that's currently underway, related to training, and to capital equipment purchasing. I think this is a reasonable and measured response. I think the freeze also drastically reduces expenditures in a very uncertain time, but provides for the continuation of our vital services and gives us the opportunity to come back and reassess where we are in six months and make a more informed decision. I sent you some rough estimates about pandemic-related revenue losses that Todd had calculated, and it's about 1.4 million in a worst-case scenario with our restaurants closed through June. Now, I want to stress that we don't have any indication that that will be the case, but we did look at a worst-case scenario. And so, our perspective is very conservative in that we weren't optimistic at all. But I didn't want to give the impression that we knew something was going to be extended to June. So, we're looking at a reduction of 60,000 in sales tax, 60,000 in home rural sales tax, 600,000 in income tax, a transfer stamp reduction of 200,000, billing permits 300,000, and interest income 200,000. We still have a proposed, even with those revenue changes, a projected fund balance around 9,230,873 dollars. And the recommended holds that we're doing puts us pretty close to that 1.4 puts us, um, pretty close to that 1.4 million, um, in revenue losses, um, with a little bit of flexibility. I wanted to also point out that there are, um, other pandemic-related actions that are delaying revenue. We are, um, delaying, um, business license and liquor license renewals to June 1. And we're stopping, as I mentioned before, the water shut-offs and waiving late, um, payments um, through, uh, the end of April. And then, of course, the, um, water, um, the note, the sewer increase for six months. And that is the, the overall, um, budget plan that we want to, um, put forth, and then we can continue with the departmental budget reviews. They'll be slightly different, um, on the capital side, as Dan and, um, the golf folks can, um, share with you. And, um, even those proposed budgets have significantly, um, changed just in the last few weeks. So I will turn it over to the departments. I suggest that we do golf first.
Okay, hello, good evening, Mayor and Board, uh, this is Phil Enz talking here. I will go over a, uh, the, the golf portion of the budget and then, um, obviously answer any questions that any of you have. First off, I hope all, you and your loved ones are, are well during this time. Um, after, after my part, we will hand over to Paul Peterson, and he will take the food and beverage portion, and Kevin, Kevin Duru will do the grounds. Okay, I'm getting some terrible feedback here, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, um, okay, good, I, I'm hearing myself, so it's kinda crazy here. Um, we are an eighteen-hole golf course, uh, purchased by the village in nineteen seventy-eight. We host about thirty-three thousand rounds, uh, annually here, uh, hosting tournament outings. Uh, we have a practice facility with, with, uh, driving grains in our simulator, um, full-service restaurants, um, locker rooms, cart storage. We are going forward here, uh, we are projecting, again, this is probably gonna change, uh, projecting a seven-point-eight increase in revenue over last year. We, you know, obviously, things are gonna change. We are hearing some, you know, we're still a little bit optimistic that we're gonna be able to open, uh, when the governor's restrictions are, uh, are done here on April 7th. But, uh, going over some of our short-term, uh, things here, we've, uh, enhanced the public awareness, um, to, to increase residents' awareness of our services, um, through social media, a lot, lot more activity on Twitter, Facebook, and email marketing. Um, we continue to host all of the, uh, local community events here for Bartlett, Bartlett Silverhawks Baseball, Raiders Football, the Bartlett Chamber, the Lions Club, um, the Bartlett Rotary Club, and we also host the National Night Out Pitch Putt and Drive Golf Event. We are always, uh, monitoring our competitors' rates in an ever-changing landscape in golf. I'm a little afraid we're gonna have a price war coming up here in a little bit, but, um, we, we do a lot of online revenue, uh, forty-seven-hundred-and-fifty rounds last year booked online, uh, two-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand dollars in, in revenue there. Uh, we were able to save some money last year renegotiating our agreement with them, um, and, uh, saving us about ten-thousand dollars in, uh, fees that, uh, they were charging us in the past. Um, going forward, or looking back at last year, uh, I'm on page three here, Todd, if you're following along. But we did add a, a new golf league to our, uh, evening schedule last year. Um, had our second annual Ladies Trunk Show Day, which we did about, uh, three-thousand dollars in clothing sales that day. Um, we do have a new answering service that we've implemented through our website provider that, uh, allows us to answer, uh, phone calls twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And I am now going forward, uh, Todd, to the revenue page here. Into our, into our summary page, we'll go to the summary page, Todd. Our total rounds projected for this year is thirty-one thousand. Um, resident rounds will be just under the five-thousand mark, um, forty-five season passes. We host eleven golf leagues and anticipate about twenty-five junior golf participants. Uh, we have no new personnel requests for this year. There is no capital outlay for golf going forward. Um, professional development has, uh, stayed the same as it's, as it's been in the past. Um, there's one out-of-town request there for the PGA Merchandise Show in Orlando, Florida. Uh, professional association detail has not changed. And, uh, with that being said, if there are any questions with any of the line items and things like that, I'm more than happy to answer them to the best of my ability.
Hey Phil, um, this is Paula. Before we jump into questions, um, would you just share with the board what you told me in staff today? Um, one, about, um, the conversations that it's the PGA that's pushing?
It's the, well, I, uh, the Illinois PGA and the Chicago District Golf Association are in contact with the governor's office, uh, making an effort to try to, uh, allow golf as a recreational activity. Um, I, I do believe, I, I just actually got a text from a colleague of mine that, uh, there is a local, uh, golf course in the area that is gonna open up in the very near future here, um, with, uh, just allowing the people to make reservations online and pay at the starters, uh, pay the starter on a, on a remote device. So it's something, uh, we'll have to, to look at here in the next several days.
Okay, yeah, I was wondering how that would work. And then my second question, um, um, you met, you, you talked about the, the merchandise and, um, how we're anticipating that.
We are doing everything we can, obviously, to cut costs here. Um, it is just, uh, full-time staff for the, for the time being here, no, no part-time staff. Um, I have canceled and, uh, moved back, uh, a lot of our merchandise for the year, um, anticipating that this may go on a little bit longer than, than, than folks think. So right now, uh, anything that, that's coming in as far as clothing and stuff is on hold.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
I don't, I, I'm looking, but I, I don't seem to be seeing the revenue that came in from the golf simulator. Can you direct me where I should be looking?
Well, this, uh, thank you for the question. The, the simulator revenue is, is, is lumped into the green fee revenue, actually. So it is, uh, it is about twenty, twenty thousand dollars the last I looked for, for this year. And it's held the same, it, it's increased every year up until this year. We did have, uh, a lot of our regular, uh, simulator players that played during the week had a lot of health problems this year. So we, we did, uh, we gained a lot of evening play, and we did lose some play in the morning, uh, this, this winter. But the simulator is, uh, is, uh, twenty thousand dollars.
Is that, is that a revenue on return on investment, so to speak? Or we, or is that after expenses?
No, that's, that's straight revenue, we do split that revenue, so the, not all of that revenue is ours.
So Phil, what would be the chance, is there a way that, that we could look into an area? We could put a second simulator, if it's possible?
Um, I, uh, that's a great question, and we have looked into that. Um, I actually had, uh, our, one of our architect, Mark Lindstrom, drew up some plans to, um, knock out a wall in our, in our bar and, and, and make an area in the golf shop. That's one thought, um, he sent over some drawings, that was just recently. We don't, we're, we're unable to get two together, other than putting them in the bar and, and making that, that space a little bit bigger. And, uh, having two simulators together is, is something very nice, 'cause then you can get a crowd of eight, nine, ten people, um, and, and you need them near the beverage, you know, you need them near the bar. So we've, we, we don't have room in the basement to get two together. So our only option to have two is, uh, you know, like I just mentioned.
Trustee Camera, we're also working on getting some estimates on how much it would cost to knock that wall out. And then, uh, I know Phil has spent quite a bit of time down in Florida looking at, uh, or he's had a lot of discussions regarding a second simulator. So those are all things that we're, we're still working on.
Right, uh, just looking for any, any additional income we can have come in, it'd be great.
It is a, it is a, a growing, a very rapidly growing business in the golf industry. As, uh, for our, for our golf courses in the northern half of the country, it has become a must almost, to keep, uh, keep, keep bringing the cash register in the wintertime.
Right, all right, thank you.
You bet, if we can, if we can make it work and it's, uh, cost-effective, it's something we would love to do.
Sounds good.
Go to grounds, or do you wanna go to food and beverage?
Do you wanna go to, Paul, are you here? You wanna, Paul, do you wanna take food and beverage, or, or we?
Whatever you guys wanna do.
Go ahead, Paul.
Go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, but-
Okay, let me get rid of my maintenance pages first.
They always forget about maintenance.
Sorry.
All right.
I just saved the best for last, come on.
Almost there, hang in.
Sorry.
I'm just an expenditure.
Okay, uh, okay, I'm ready to go, here we go. Golf, uh, uh, did you wanna go through the personnel request, or you wanna go right to the, yeah?
Oh, there aren't.
There we go. Uh, so golf, food and beverage under restaurant, uh, we are asking for no, uh, no personnel at all. Under, uh, capital outlay, same thing, uh, we are not asking for anything there. Uh, we have our normal basket and food handling certifications that the staff does online. And, uh, that's just a small total there. We have no association details. Uh, under restaurant, uh, those line items in there, you'll see a few things. You'll see a, a little bit of a decrease in, uh, temporary salaries. Uh, that's based on us, uh, eliminating the fish fry. And, uh, uh, food is gonna be down, even though food prices are gonna be up, uh, we're, we probably took five thousand dollars less in food costs, uh, in restaurant based on not having the fish fry also. So we're, we're projecting to do almost the same amount of food and beverage purchases with seventeen thousand dollars more in sales coming up. Uh, line items behind that, if you have any questions, we're more than happy to ask. Uh, color, color copier has to go under the food and beverage banquet, capital outlay. We currently have a copier that's fifteen years old, the life expectancy for them are about ten years. Uh, the last couple of time parts are almost impossible to find. Uh, we save a lot of money by printing all of our own brochures, business cards, menus, and everything. So quality color printing is important, especially for the, uh, wedding brochures. So that's a key piece of equipment for, uh, for me and Evan going forward. You're gonna find the same, same basket and food handling certifications under banquet staff. And then, under, uh, golf banquet, uh, if there's any questions there, uh, I certainly can answer them.
Paul, could you, I know, um, before we get into questions, can you please go over, um, what you and your staff have been doing relative to the, um, just the changes that we've had to make relative to COVID?
Well, that's a multifaceted, uh, question, question there.
Well, how we're dealing with the bookings and, and those kinds of things.
I think the biggest thing that we, we, we took out of it was, we, it was important for us from the very beginning to be very transparent, to be very upfront, uh, to let people know what, uh, what all these, the dates, the March thirtieth date, the April seventh date, the May eleventh date for the fifty people together. Uh, we went upfront and, and, and contacted everybody through those periods and gave them alternatives. We, we gave them the chance to, to reschedule their event. We gave them a chance to, uh, receive their deposit back if they wanted to. Uh, and each one was in a different situation based on what, what the event was, the size of the event, the importance of the event, and what our ability to carry that ongoing in the forward's gonna be. Uh, we have got nothing but positive feedback from everybody stating how well we handled the situation, the communication that was so good through Evan, uh, myself and Dustin carrying that on forward. And, and, and just to let people know that we have no exact date, time, specific, uh, action or when any of that's gonna happen, we're just gonna have to kinda roll with the punches and go with whatever everybody does. It's just important to keep everyone safe, our staff safe. Uh, there's no temporary staff being here at all right now. Uh, we are just rotating shifts in through the office, working from home as much as we can with email and everything. Uh, but, uh, the community, a lot of residents in Bartlett appreciate the way, uh, we, we've handled these beginning weeks, and, uh, uh, we look forward to keeping them up to, to date with what we've got going on.
Thanks.
Yep.
So, Paul, uh, Trustee Camera here, I have a question with regards to the, uh, need for a new copier. I see that, uh, there's a service agreement with the golf program where they have a coffee, a copy machine at twelve hundred dollars. Is there some reason why the, the, uh, restaurant part of things couldn't be teaming up with the golf part of things and using the same copier?
Uh, we, we are sharing-
Go ahead, go ahead, Phil.
Yeah, we are, we are currently sharing that copier, yes.
So, that's, that's working out okay currently?
It works out okay, um, you know, from a, from, uh, you know, with the, with the copier being in the, uh, in the office, um, um, in the, in the food and beverage office. Um, sometimes we do, we print jobs to that copier and it gets in food and beverages' way, but, uh, no, it, it works out okay.
There's one copier.
Yeah, we only have one in the-
So you could probably get by without- You could probably get by without an eight-thousand-dollar copy for, copier for a while?
Uh, I don't know, if you saw what, uh, when the last, the last guy that came out and tried to work on the copier, he was spread out all, all over the floor for like eight hours, 'cause he-
It, 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 uh, it breaks down. It, it gets worse and worse as, as, as the days go by, we, we have-
I think I kinda reached out to Todd over there in finance, and he gave us an idea based on our load and what we need our wedding brochures to look at. And I think, uh, I think Todd, Todd and us came up with that dollar amount for that kinda equivalent copier that we need for the multiple menus and brochures we need to put out.
Uh, when I, this is Paula, I think what we'll do is we'll, um, you know, we've been doing things a lot differently, um, the last few weeks. I'm gonna ask Chris to take a look at that, and if there's some way that we can, um, accommodate that printing over here at Village Hall, um, for the next six months, we're gonna try and do that.
And, and that's, well, well, as long as we have those high, high-quality resolutions, give out to guests that are looking for events, if that's the way to do it, that's good.
Yeah.
I appreciate it, yeah.
Eight thousand here, eight thousand there, seems to add up after a while, so.
That's the one thing that concerns me, this is Trustee Danny, is the quality going out the door. We're looking, actively looking to, uh, to, uh, book weddings and banquets and whatnot. And, uh, some of the, the quality has to be there to impress these people. So I'm a little, you know, I, I understand what you're saying, but, uh, I don't wanna skimp anything for the quality and have somebody walk back their car and says, "This looks like crap, I don't wanna go to this place," you know? The other thing I wanted to ask you guys is because we're talking about this copy machine now, uh, could you take a look at, uh, if it's possible to lease one?
We, we certainly could go ahead and do that also.
Yeah, I don't know, I've, I've never leased a copy machine before, I don't even know if, uh, if that's available or not. But, uh, but, uh, it is, right? So, yeah, I guess you can't lease a copy machine, well, why don't you take a look at that? Then we don't have the cash outlay of-
Well, let's work-
I'm sorry?
Yeah, let, let, let's work with, uh, let's work with IT, take a look at the equipment, and let's come up with whatever the best solution is gonna be to, 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 to still get a good product, but save the most amount of money we can.
Sure, sure, and I, I, I am, and Trustee Camera's concerned, and, uh, you know, let's take a look at it, okay?
I'm still pretty, pretty, uh-
No, I'm good with it.
One?
I would be very careful about leasing a machine. They, they, it, the lease arrangements make it sound as if it's cheaper, but in the long term, it usually isn't. And those contracts are usually auto-renewing.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah, I have, I think you end up spending more money on a lease than you do if you purchase things outright. But I'm also agreeing with Paula, I think maybe putting this off for six months isn't a bad idea.
Okay, yeah, well, I just threw the lease out there as another alternative. I know nothing about leasing a copy machine.
Yeah, let's, let's work with IT, move something out through the village with something that's available up there, and we can still do that out seamlessly, and have a great product to give to our guests, and I'm all for it.
Okay.
This is, um, Trustee Carbonaro, I have a few questions, uh, Paul.
Please.
The fish fry, the fish fry detainment, is that, is that temporary? Obviously, 'cause we can't have people sitting down to dinner right now in the state of Illinois. Um, the fish fry, the fish fry detainment, is that, is that temporary? Obviously, because we can't have people sitting down to dinner right now in the state of Illinois. Is that something you're going to pick back up?
We canceled the fish during Lent.
Yeah, this. We, we determined the, the amount of, uh, money that, uh, we were, based on the reduced counts of the amount of fish fries that were in the neighborhood. And, uh, it, it just had gone down to the point where we were losing quite a bit of money just by going ahead and do it. We did a nice job. We had a great fish fry, but that being said, it made more sense for us to stay open on Friday evenings to try to do private events going, going forward.
Got you. Okay, so you're cutting it out altogether and, and it's a, that's a savings of what? Yeah, how much of a savings is that?
Man, I'm thinking probably, it depends. $10,000 to $15,000, I gotta believe.
Hey, you can get a couple of copiers with that.
You could. You could copy a bunch of fish and fry it.
Um, I, I know, I know the, the wedding planning industry and, and in the, the hall rental, it's dog eat dog. If you start skimping in one particular place, you're going to lose business elsewhere. So, I don't, I don't think you really want to do that. Like, and, and.
No.
As far as working with, um, with the, the public, uh, as far as being transparent, um, you, you well know, I don't know if anybody else knows, but my, uh, my daughter had a wedding scheduled for August 10th this year and she talked to Evan and yourself. Um, there was supposed to be 125 people there, but only 50 people were going to be allowed to show up because the rest of them couldn't catch a flight to come in, so she had to reschedule it till next year. And you guys helped her with that and trust me, that was a very emotional period of, oh crap, now we got to change everything because nobody can show up. So, hopefully that's not happening too, too much to you, but thank you for your, um,
Why?
counseling for her going through that because it was a mess.
I appreciate that, uh, you know, each, 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 uh, each event is individual. Uh, we've ended up giving a couple of large deposits back that people already had committed to and, 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 and in some, you know, some of the people maybe are looking forward to, to getting that money back in their pocket, uh, if they didn't book a future event coming up, but, uh, uh, I, I, there, there's going to be more of it and, uh, you guys can be trusting us that we're going to handle it the right way.
Of course. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate the comment. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Oh, can you, um, can you outline for me why we? One of the objectives when we made some moves in the banquet and restaurant were to reduce the total overhead salaries. And now all of a sudden we're creeping again. In 1718, it was 121 for the restaurant. And, and, and 1718, it was 194 for the banquet. We got it down to 140 and 103. And now we're going to try to push it back up to 114 and 154. Um, until we start turning this into a profitable entity, I, I can't see keep, these, these permanent salaries are what's driving our, our problem. Do you understand why we're increasing those?
Um, I will take a look at those. Um, we did have some staffing changes and, you know, when we cut one position, um, we added a, um, part-time position, um, but also, um, readjusted, uh, the scale there. So, um, I'll ask, uh, Janelle to do a little more historical background and so we can show you how that, how that happened.
Yeah, I, I have an issue with moving, uh, in the wrong direction again.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
I understand that.
I wouldn't say wrong direction. I just, I'm just saying if, you know, if you're trying to, if you're trying to make this an enterprise, uh, area, let's, let's treat it that way. Let's make sure we're very, very conscious of what it's costing to run this thing. And, um, that's, that's the permanent stuff that doesn't go away. And all of these other things that we have on here probably should be taken down by about 75% this year because you're not going to have this much part-time, you're not going to have this many events. I mean, everything obviously is going to be askew, um, with a lot of this stuff, so.
It's going to be a staggering total how that is different than what we're proj- projecting right now.
And we got to get out ahead of the, uh, uh, the variables that we can fix. You got to get out ahead of those and you got to, you got to trim them back.
I definitely think we could do some of that on a, on a ongoing basis, Mayor. I think, um, one of the big things that we're going to want to know is if the golf course can be opened because that's a game changer in that respect too. I mean, if we can open up the golf course in April, we're going to have a pretty good year at the golf course. Um, so that is one thing that I think we may need to be looking at that on a monthly basis and reporting that back out.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Uh, the last category after banquet would normally be, uh, uh, midway. Uh, midway, uh, fell off at the end of the year and, and May of last year and the end of the year to a degree we've never seen before as far as, uh, along with golf traffic and everything else. And it's so important to keep that little, uh, little profit center going down there. Uh, so I think our reduced revenues be closer to the five-year average. Hopefully that's going to go up. And, uh, uh, we, you know, we did a good job of, I think, reducing staffing accordingly with reduced revenues at the 16,000 in there and we'll continue to do that each day that we're here. If, if, if it doesn't make sense to have someone out there, uh, to go with it and have everything available inside the clubhouse. But, uh, it would be great for weather and golf rounds to go out to make our $60,000 out there again would be a big deal.
Paul, this Ray, uh, the one thing that I think that, uh, really helped out there also is, uh, and I'm not certain who came up with the idea. I'd like to take credit for it, but I can't. Uh, selling the, uh, hot dogs and brats and whatnot on the grill on weekends outside the midway. I think that helped immensely.
I think it did. I think, uh, it, it helped just on weekend days, on the Saturdays and Sundays with permanent tee tags and everything. And, and, and a lot of the golf outings that we had Dustin down there. Those are people that go to different places and different events and they don't see something like that. So, that catches their eye and they always think about Bartlett Hills going forward. And we're doing like a, the extra step to go ahead and make something kind of unique for them. So, I appreciate that. That was a great idea and it has worked out well.
Is, is that everything else?
I think we, I think so.
All right. Then we'll, uh, talk about, uh, grounds and maintenance.
There we go. Good evening, everybody.
Kevin? Kevin?
How are you?
Trustee Danny, I need you to call me tomorrow morning, please.
Okay.
Trustee Danny, I told him.
I will, I will do that. Um, if, if Todd will just go through these sheets and, um, first thing, uh, capital outlay requests, we have two requests, uh, both items will, will be on the vehicle replacement fund. Um, the first one, uh, first priority is a leaf debris vacuum. If you'll look, we are replacing, uh, a 1990 model vacuum. Um, this, uh, this machine is mostly used for, for, uh, leaf cleanup in, in the fall. We use it for other things during the season, but mostly for leaf cleanup. Um, we, we have 3,500 trees on the golf course and we're relying on one 30-year-old piece of machinery to pick up all those leaves. It's, it's pretty outstanding, pretty crazy. Um, so that, that's, uh, that's.
Kevin, let me ask you a question about that. I don't know how the other board members feel, but if you said we're only using this, uh, leaf and debris vacuum in the fall for the most part, is there any chance we could hold off for the period that we've been kicking around all night, six months? And then review it again?
We, we can do whatever you guys would, would like to do. It, it's, uh, the machine is actually running. We, we are having a hard time finding parts for it. If it does break down, mind you, this is the only unit we have to, to pick up the leaves. So, um, it, it's, we're, we're, we're chancing it, but, uh, whatever the board decides, we, we can handle.
Well, if anything ever happened to it, would you guys be able to, uh, rent one or borrow one from another, uh, golf course?
It, it'd be really hard at that time that we need it in the fall because everyone's using theirs as well. So, you know, all the leaves fall at the same time, so that, that would be difficult.
Well, I'd like to see if we could just hold off a little bit on this and review.
We, we can certainly do that. We can, and I, I can.
Well, you can always go out and contract somebody to do the work too.
Um, that's, that's a possibility as well.
I think maybe we can come up with a, um, you know, a contingency plan for if it breaks down. Um, but we can certainly, like Kevin said, hold off on the purchase.
Yeah, and I, I can also tell you, I just was informed, I, I went to the, our national show, um, down in Florida in February and that was after this budget was proposed and, and, um, that 28.5 number is, is actually could get it for 22. I found a new manufacturer that, that sells these things. And, um, so, so if the 28.5 is gearing you, we could get, probably get it for 22.5 in that area.
I've got, I've got a better, I've got a better idea. Just give a rate to trustee Danny. He's there all the time anyway.
If he's willing, uh, we could use the help, but, uh.
I have, you know, I, that would work out, you know, with the economy and the situation that's in. I'm looking for a part-time job, but you have.
There you go.
Hope not any hiring in Bartlett Hills.
We're, we're on a hiring freeze at the moment, but hopefully that'll be lifted, lifted soon. Um, our, our second priority item, our two walking greens mowers, this is a, a part of our fleet of mowers. Um, one mower is 16 years old, the other one's 15 years old. Um, this is just part of our rotation program and, um, well, if, if you so choose to, to hold off on those, we can, we can do that as well. Um, we, we have mowers right now that are all currently working, so.
This is trustee Hopkins. Are you, um, requesting that we hold off or?
No, I'm not requesting that you hold off, but we can certainly try if you, you so choose.
Could we, um, could we maybe split it and get one?
Anything's a possibility at this point. We certainly could do that.
Trustee Hopkins, that's probably a very good idea. Buy one now and then in six months, review it again for the second one.
We can do that.
I would, I would agree with you.
We can.
And I wouldn't order anything until, I wouldn't order anything until we, how, how quick is the delivery on those things?
Uh, within a month.
Okay, so within the next couple of weeks, they'll probably understand what's going on, so.
Yeah, we, we can certainly hold off and we usually do that and, and, uh, it's not a problem. But the leaf debris vacuum, we, we will be getting some, some demos to try different units and we'll be doing that throughout the summer, so we won't, we won't be committed until the fall anyways.
Yeah, just keep getting demos until winter time.
Can I see that one again? Yeah.
Yeah, right, right. We can try that for a while. I don't know. About September 15th. Is, um.
Does trustee Danny have a riding lawnmower he could use?
If he does, he hasn't offered it up yet, so I'm, I'm still waiting.
I have a landscape service.
Hey, I know somebody that has an old tractor.
There you go. We're, we'll be taking volunteers, I'm sure. Um, the next, uh, page, professional development, there's really no changes, um, to that other than, uh, it's a little bit less and that I will not be attending next year. Professional associate, association details, uh, pretty much the same as well. Our line, line item details is, uh, overall, we have a 2% decrease in, in, in our budget. And if there's anything that really stands out, I'll be certainly happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, Kevin, it's Ray again. I do have a question. Uh, you know, we all, it's pretty, well, it's, it's common knowledge that you're retiring. And I want to thank you for all the years of service because I get compliments, uh, from numerous golfers, um, the, the facility and how, how a great, what great shape the grounds are in at, uh, at Bartlett Hills. Uh, the question I have though is, who's, who do you have, uh, you, you're grooming someone to take your place, correct?
Correct. I currently have, uh, my assistant, his name is Matt Girmack and, uh, he's, he's more than ready to, to take over. He's, he's really good, very energetic and, and he knows the business. He's been doing this a while.
All right, great. How long's he been, uh, with you?
He started last, uh, last year, so he's been a little over a year right now.
And where was he before?
He was at Bobolink Country Club.
That's enough, enough said.
Yep.
Uh, are you giving any consideration to cut, cutting down that tree over a number eight?
We're looking into it and every tree is a possibility. It, it needs to come down. Um, we, we, we have certainly some, some old, old aging silver maple trees that are.
And then one tree on, and one tree on 15, if you slice the ball, you hit the tree all the time.
Oh, everybody wants that tree down and, uh, we can look into that as well.
Thanks, Kevin.
Are you, are you taking, are you taking your dog with you or is there a new, a new dog in the budget or what?
There's already a new dog out there.
Yeah, unfortunately, Matt is training his, his dog and, um, she's, she's a great goose chaser, so she's doing really well.
There we go. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, let's move it along here.
Okay, Dan, you're up.
Yeah, Public Works.
Chris, can you, uh, follow me? Everybody see that?
Yep.
All right, we'll start out with the street budget. Um, these percentages will change with the, some of that discussion we had earlier that Paul had on the budget modifications. So, I'll jump right into some of the goals, um, that we accomplished this year and what we're looking to do next year. Um, one of the things we were able to accomplish are those gaps that we had out at Kohler Field to hook up to the state park. Got that completed. That was through a grant. Um, we also received a MWRD green infrastructure grant that, uh, hopefully will be coming to the board soon for approval of an IGA which will go towards our bike path, um, along West Bartlett, east of Devon, along the church there. We're looking to do, that's been on the books for a while. We've just been looking for funding. We were able to secure a portion of it that would go towards the bioswale of that. Um, one of the other big things that we did this year during our, uh, winter operations, we were able to get our anti-icing program up and running where we're making our own brine, um, which helps us, you've probably seen prior to a snow event, the white lines all over the pavement. That's us applying, uh, well, us and the county because they do it quite a bit as well, um, applying brine on the pavement, uh, to prevent that snow from, uh, or delays the snow from adhering to the pavement and gives us more time to respond. Um, we're, we're going to be working on some bike paths again this year. Um, we're going to try to do some in-house again along the ComEd right away. Uh, and then we're also looking at doing some seal coating of the newer path to try to preserve those. Um, as far as, uh, we keep grinding away, uh, with doing our own, uh, in-house sidewalk replacements, pavement patching, you name it, we've been able to do quite a bit and we continue to increase those as we can. Um, as far as the summary, uh, you'll see that we're actually down one person. Um, but you'll see, uh, we've kind of shifted and put that back over to the water. So, when we get to that, I can talk, talk about that. Um, we have no, so we have no personnel increases. Our capital will all be delayed at least for the six months. You can see we had a couple of dump trucks, our asphalt paving machine, um, trailer. Um, we were looking to do another anti-icing vehicle. Um, and then we have a couple things at the Public Works that we are going to split up between water sewer and streets, which is some pavement work that, uh, we have a gravel parking lot for the employees that we'd like to get paved and then paving around the buildings. It's badly needed. And then our admin roof is in need of replacement, but we'll delay all those for the time being. Um, professional development was the same. We will make the adjustments based on the holding off on training for six months. Um, associations, same. As far as, uh, the line item stuff, most of our stuff is just adjustments based on prior experience. Um, you'll see the pluses and the minuses. One thing we did do, you'll see in the tree trimming. the pluses and the minuses. One thing we did do, you'll see in the tree trimming line item, we increased that. What we did is we actually, the tree purchase program, which is further down on the next page, we, we haven't been getting as many, uh, requests for trees, so we adjusted that number down and brought it over here. This allows us to do some, uh, contract trimming. Um, our guys don't do trimming near power lines, so we usually hire that out, and then we were also looking at, cause, um, tree trimming is still one of our top requests that we get, and we're, we're trying to get caught up. We're doing a good job of, of, uh, knocking down some of these, uh, neighborhoods that haven't been trimmed in a while. We were looking at hiring a contractor or two to help, uh, catch up, basically. Give them a neighborhood, let them do some of that work as well. Um, and then the other one was salt. Um, this year, the salt prices were high. Uh, we're actually just putting our bid for the county and state purchase for next year. We're anticipating, everybody's anticipating that it should go down, because we had a relatively mild winter, um, so hopefully those prices will come in, uh, lower, uh, than they did this year. Um, and then here's where I was talking about the tree purchase. We'd lowered that, moved it over to the tree trimming line item. Um, overall, the, uh, percentage will be adjusted depending on where we end up with the capital, but any questions on street?
This, Trustee Danny, Dan, on, uh, page six, I believe it was, you, uh, there was a roof you had talked about, maybe it was page seven. There's roof replacement, number six. That just caught my eye as you were flipping through there. Can you get by with that roof right now?
We can. We had a couple roofers come out, and they said it's in need of repair, uh, or replacement. Um, we haven't had, we've had a couple little leaks, but it's, it's a matter. If we had to hold off another year, we were actually gonna, I know Village Hall is looking at, uh, insurance claim, um, so we're pursuing that end of things as well, so, um, it could, it could wait if we had to, so, um, the plan is to just postpone that one for right now.
I was just curious. I'm not saying you have to postpone it, but I was just wondering what the condition, yeah, the condition was, so...
It's not like we have leaks every time it rains or anything like that. It's not to that extent. We're just trying to get it before, to that point.
Dan, Trustee Cammer, on page nine, with the, uh, streetlight maintenance materials, you put that increase to reflect exterior expenditures at eleven percent increase. You know, I was thinking, if we're talking streetlights, that the LEDs and stuff you had put in, that the prices would come down, uh, in maintenance and that sort of thing. What are, what are we talking about as far as maintenance goes?
This is, we are changing out LED, uh, lights, and this is continuing our program. We actually have been very successful in using the ComEd rebates, so this allows us to purchase, using the ComEd rebates allows us to purchase more lights and get more streetlights, change it out. So that's pretty much what we're doing, is we're trying to get all of our lights turned over to LED.
Okay, good. Now, that's very interesting. All right, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions on street?
Okay, gentlemen, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll move on to water. Um, obviously, the big thing with water is we were able to convert for, uh, over to Lake Michigan water, um, and, uh, we still have a couple projects that we're closing out on that. We're finishing up the, uh, conversion of the Lake Street Pump Station, and we've got the design for the Sterns Road Pump Station underway, so those are ongoing, um, but everything else, everything seems to be, uh, going very well with the water. We did have, and you'll see, uh, well, later on, when we get to the measures, um, we continue to do the leak detection program that's helped us, uh, over our unaccounted-for water, uh, in our system, because it's, the main thing that we've been finding in that is, uh, hydrants that are leaking, so we're able to repair those in-house and, uh, capture that water, uh, prevent it from leaking out. Um, we were able to, um, do some more water main replacement, um, and we've got another program, uh, section to be replaced next year. Um, the one thing, uh, here's the leak detection. We had sixty-six leaks that we found, and we were able to, uh, take care of in-house. Um, we started up a valve exercising program. Um, we find when, uh, when we get a water main break, you gotta be able to shut off the valves to be able to isolate to a smaller area, so you don't take, uh, a bunch of residents, uh, homes out of service, and we found that some of these valves are, uh, where we aren't able to get them closed, so we're, we've put a program together to make sure that we're going through and exercising them, finding the ones that are bad and replacing them, so that we can avoid that in the future. Um, and one of the big things with our, uh, two-page water, uh, transition, um, when we were able to bring the, uh, we had perfect timing, I think, as far as bidding out the, the big transmission main in our twenty-four-inch and sixteen-inch water mains, because after that, the prices went up substantially, but we were able to actually complete the two-page water transmission main, the thirty-inch main from Roselle, and our twenty-four-inch and sixteen-inch mains for a price that we thought was gonna be for the transmission main alone. So that was good, and that allowed us to bring our two-page water loan, um, about two million dollars under the twenty-one million that we anticipated, so that was good. Um, here's the summary. Uh, you'll see one up in here. It's a maintenance worker. You'll see in the past, we, we had someone retire. We, we tried to leave it open, but we found that we kept borrowing from the streets and water, um, or streets and sewer divisions, uh, to get a crew together to do a water main break and that, so when, uh, we ended up moving one street position over to the water to balance things out a little bit, so no net gain, but just moving people around between the, the divisions, I think it'll work. Um, here's where I was talking about on the main breaks. You'll see, uh, we had a large amount this year. That's mainly because of the transition to the wa-, uh, two-page, or feeding from a, you know, different direction. Um, we were going through the growing pains of pumps turning on and off and jarring the system. Uh, knock on wood, um, it's been quiet, and hopefully we've worked out those bugs at this point. So no new personnel, uh, capital outlay. This is the water share of those pave, that pavement, paving and, uh, roof that we'll put on hold for right now. Um, professional development, um, pretty much the same. Um, we'll adjust that accordingly as well. Association, the same. Then line items, um, a lot of it is doing that, uh, adjusting based on prior experience. Um, did have a bump in the professional development. Um, if you remember, Tom Rozika, um, was a supervisor for many years. He retired. Um, we were able to promote, um, Blake Grenley to, uh, the water supervisor, and he's been doing some, uh, management training already, um, so just with a new supervisor in that, um, wanna keep him getting, being trained up and prepared for that, so I bumped that up a little bit, but we'll adjust that accordingly. Um, and then here's the two-page water transmission line item. That twenty-one was adjusted down to nineteen, and that's the spending per month, uh, that we were able to get from that. Any questions on the water budget?
Nope.
All right. We'll go to sewer. Um, so the sewer budget, um, big thing there, um, we are moving forward on the bittersweet treatment plant design and the Devon excess flow designs. Uh, both of those are underway. We also continue on our sanitary sewer improvements. We actually just finished, uh, lining the area west of Oak, north of the tracks, pretty much south of Morse, uh, in that area, and actually the contractor, we were, we were able to, they actually came in under budget, and we had some money, uh, that remained, so what we're looking at doing, they're actually gonna be out there this week, um, is line some of the services that we had in the area east of Oak that came up in that smoke test, uh, so they're actually gonna get the ones that were on the, uh, priority list completed this week, hopefully. So that'll be good. We'll see what we did. We put out a feeler to all the residents that were on that list, to see if they wanted to bring it all the way to the home. We did not get any takers on that, so our plan is to bring it to the right-of-way line, so they will have essentially a new service from the main all the way to the right-of-way line, um, which should take care of the majority of any type of inflow, I and I, uh, issues. Um, then, uh, we're, we also have some contracts, uh, that we'll be bringing to you shortly to look at, um, additional smoke testing, manhole rehab, and, uh, flow monitoring in the near future.
Uh, Mr. Dingen, this is Trustee Hopkins. Um, could you talk a little bit more about, um, what it would take to smoke test the, uh, the, the whole MWRD area that, uh, pertains to the restrictor on Devon?
Um, the entire area. The way we've been doing it is, we know that in the areas where we have clay pipe, um, that we need to line the clay pipe, so that's why we went ahead and did a lining on the west side of Oak this year, and the plan is to smoke test that area now that we have our mains sealed off. Now we can find out where the connections are or issues and services are on there. So the plan that you'll be seeing is, we're gonna look at, um, rehabbing the manholes in that area, and then smoke testing that area, and then from there, we'll know what type of services and what, if there's any illegal connections, anything like that. Um, to smoke test the whole area where you have mains that are clay, we know that those clay pipes are gonna be leaking, um, so that's why we've been kind of taking it after we do the lining. So the plan would be for next year, we're looking at lining an area, uh, south of railroad, start hitting that area up, and when, when we get rid of all the, the clay pipe, basically, when all the clay pipe is lined, then we'd be smoking, smoke testing the rest of those areas as well. Does that make sense?
Uh, yeah, um, since 2016, you guys have been talking about, um, working with residents and using the same contractor to basically line, uh, residential, uh, service lines that are contributing to our problem of, uh, inflow and infiltration. Um, have we done anything with that yet?
Yeah, that's what I was telling you. Um, the contractor's actually doing that this week. Um, we sent it out to the, the residents that were on that list within that report, uh, and offer them up the pricing that we had from our contractor, told them, here's, here's what the village is doing up to that right-of-way line, and then gave them a number based on footage, cost per foot to go through the house, and none of the residents, one resident responded that they were interested, but then that's as far as it went. So unfortunately, uh, it's, it's still a lot of money, um, when you look at it, um, and we didn't have any takers at this time. We did not send it to every single house, if that's what you're asking. No, we did not do that.
Okay. Um...
Though we do have an article, I'm, I'm sorry, um, I, Dan, I just wanted to mention that we do have an article about a fifty-fifty sharing program, um, going out in the next Bart letter on that as well.
All right, is there any way to put in the budget for, um, for this year to do a complete, um, study for this whole area that, that we're speaking of, to find out what we're actually up against, so we can plan for the future?
Yeah, we could put, I can, we can talk to, uh, some of the consultants and put a hole for the entire area, yes.
That, that's what I would like to see. I know we've been, this has been going on for, for decades, and, um, I just wanna try to get this situation resolved. Um, the sewers have been neglected for decades, and they really need to be repaired and fixed, and I'd kind of like to see some hard numbers about, um, after those repairs are done, how much I and I are we actually gonna get. Um, I think that's, it's a, it's a important number to actually look at.
Dan, I just want to clarify. Do you know the kind of study that Trustee Hopkins is asking about, or do we need some clarification?
If I understand, I think you're looking at doing flow monitoring, smoke testing, and all of that in the entire MWRD lift station tributary area. Is that correct?
Correct, correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Those are my only questions. You can go on, Dan.
Okay, um, there's no staffing change, um, in the sewer division. Um, capital outlay, um, you've got our channel monster, which is a, uh, basically a grinder ahead of the influent pumps. It grinds any type of debris that would come in to protect the pumps. It's in need of repair. Um, we've got a portable generator, um, that's used at the lift stations that do not have permanent generators at their site. Um, twenty-five years old, it's in need of replacement. Again, these items can be deferred for the time being, um, and then those other two items were the ones that we already talked about.
Dan, this Ray, uh, this Trustee Danny, I think, under conditions that we're going through, the country's going through right now, I think anything that can be deferred, I would defer it, and, uh, we could reevaluate it within that six-month, uh, uh, time period that we've kind of set aside.
I, yep, that's what we're looking at. Um, professional development, the same, same with the association, line items. Only, uh, we've got, in the service agreements, we were looking at adding this NASCO software subscription. What that is, is when we televise our lines, there's a software that can go with the televising equipment, where you can add the ra- rating of that sewer line as you're going. It's something that MWRD and the EPA requires it to be in the NASCO certified, um, language, basically, so this would allow us to put our televising, uh, when we do our televising, put it in the standard that's needed. Um, and then this line item down here is just sludge removal based on what I'm talking and doing right now. And, um, building maintenance, we've got a new furnace, uh, AC in the control building in need of, uh, replacement there. Um, and then really, that's the generator and the muffin monster, but other than that, any questions on the sewer side?
Dan, this is, uh, Trustee Carbonaro. Um, I didn't see the line item for the budgeted amount for the repairs to the sewer lines. Did I miss that?
Uh, that's actually in cap, in the capital budget. Um, we have, for sewers, the original budget was six hundred thousand, I believe. Um, we were proposing, I guess I need to ask Paul and Todd, we were proposing to bump that up to eight hundred thousand when we were looking at doing the rate increase. Are we still proposing that?
I think we'll look at that in six months.
Oh, we gotta look at that in six months. So, right now, the budget is six hundred thousand. We're, we'll take a look at it in, uh, six months and whether we can increase that or not.
I think I would have a, an issue with that. I think if you do anything, why don't we post... I think if you do anything, why don't we postpone the 8.5 million dollar pipeline to Bittersweet if we're going to postpone something? Because something as important as repairing our sewers have been going on for decades, and they haven't been repaired. So if we're going to hold off on something, I think it's the pipeline to Bittersweet.
This is Todd. We do have, we do have the money for the Devon Avenue improvements, that was received by the bond issue, so that was specifically obtained for the Devon Avenue. So I, I don't know that holding that project off would do anything, but we would have the money for the 800,000 for the rehabilitation program, and we would still be over our minimum balance at the six, at the end of the year. I think we could still go forward with that. Right now, we're, we increased the rates, and the DuPage side of the rates aren't going towards the wastewater treatment plan, and we had that money that we were going to use for the rehabilitation program.
Thanks, Todd.
Any other questions in Public Works?
Nope. Alright, I think that, is that?
That completes budget review. Great job, thank you.
Yeah. Are you done, Dan?
I'm done.
Oh, thank you, Dan. Mr. President, that's all we had on the agenda. It takes your finance and golf.
Alright, thank you Chairman Danny. Now, at this point, I am going to, we are going to adjourn to executive session, and I would propose that we take about a five-minute break to give Chris the ability to get things in order. So if everyone wants to get up, stretch their legs, get away from their computer for a couple minutes, we'll go ahead and I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session.
I'll move.
We should list, list the.
Yeah, let me make a, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss collective negotiation matters pursuant to Section 2C2 of the Open Meetings Act, also to discuss the sale of village-owned property pursuant to Section 2C6 of the Open Meetings Act.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Trustee Cammer, seconded by Trustee Hopkins, with a quick please call the roll.
Trustee Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Sorry, you're breaking up.
Was that a yes? Trustee Danny, did you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Dobrana?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Is that it?
That's it.
Is that everyone? Madam Clerk? Alright, well, we are adjourned and.